I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting into order. For all of those who can, please rise with Fledgled Allegiance and Mr. Sharpe Williams.
Fledgled allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Brittany, roll call.
Chair, Dr. Stibber.
Here.
Mark Strab.
Here.
John Boyd.
Here.
Tom and Patrick Center, Tom and Andrew.
Here.
We have Dan Amosco, Axel, oh, we have Robert Bishop.
Here.
Great. Excellent, thank you. Public address to the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting's agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair of the designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make the request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person and making us being available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we're meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure of participating, please try to attend in person. Thank you. Anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing no one. Anyone online? Do you see any hands raised at all? No? Okay. Moving number five, the appointment ratifications. Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes, I am pleased to say that we have re-engaged the services of Laura Mafuccio, a past assessor here. This will give us a third assessor, which will make me read a lot easier. You know, sometimes we need signatures on something in a timely way. And if any one of the assessors is, any one of the two assessors now is out, that can cause a problem. So it's great to have her back on board. She'll just be coming back for four hours a week and helping out with just a few things in the office and signing documents when necessary. So I would recommend for your ratification, Laura Mafuccio as assessor. We're just, right now, appointing her for the rest of the year. Come the end of the year, we'll put her on for the ensuing fiscal year.
So that date's correct, May 2nd start date?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to appoint Laura Mafuccio as assessor effective May 2nd, 2022 through June 30th, 2022.
Got a second on that?
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, quick question. Who are the three assessors?
Gene Boudreau is the principal assessor. And Heather Durant is the second assessor and the assessor clerk.
Right. I thought there was some kind of foot that the consultant we had, who did all his work, was going to be the third assessor.
Yes, that had been, my understanding is, well, it turns out that the consultant cannot lead the third assessor. Considered a conflict of interest. So we need someone appointed to that position.
Right.
Okay. Great. Thank you. There's a motion a second. Any further discussion? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. The ratification of the nomination of Gregory Elser as inspector of animals. Mr. Hutchinson.
Officer Elser is currently the inspector of animals. This is a motion to have him be, we're nominating him. It's actually a state appointment. The animal control officer is a town appointment. The animal inspector is a state appointment. So we actually nominate him to the state.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the nomination of Gregory Elser as inspector of animals.
Second. Motion a second. Any discussion? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
And does this need to be signed by anyone on the board, Mr. Hutchinson?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to the FY '23 budgets. We have 152 for the telephone. Danny?
I see him.
Come on up to the, yeah?
Telephone, internet, email budget. Telephone. This budget was a little bit difficult for me because we've got some new things going on with it. First off, our Verizon contract is no longer and we now solicit the services of TPX Communications.
Hold on a minute, is that all right?
Did it talk about, you know, the land for sale too, you know, and everything?
I didn't hear it started at all. Oh, that's good. So there's also fiber optic internet, a lot of items that's new. And we're using Access Plus Communications. And I think that has to do with the new telephone system. Is that correct? So that basically has increased the budget by $8,200. Eighty-two eighty. The rest of it is all pretty much standard. I'm trying to think. Internet is going up with the spectrum, but I'm thinking we may be able to drop spectrum, which is now called charter communications. Once we engage in fiber optic loop or something like that.
Yes, we are applying for a grant to install a fiber optic loop that I mentioned last week. Tom and Pat talked about it as well.
Any questions? TA?
TA.
Mr. Bishop, you okay?
Yes.
Okay. And which one do you have next? Any streetlights?
I have Bokead. Three-twenty. Unless you want to go to the left.
We have streetlights in our list here going by, oh, the Bokead is three-twenty.
Three-twenty.
Three-twenty. Am I out of order here?
Not out of order either.
Oh, there you go. Okay, then, thank you. Okay.
So this budget has gone down from last year. I've attached, like, headcounts for what happened in '20, what is happening in '22. So if you flip up to the third page, you should be able to see that. We budgeted for 23 people, or students, in FY '22. And only 15 of them materialized. So there's a leftover, a huge leftover budget due to the fact that one tuition cost was $18,679. So that basically is ninth graders wanting to go in and opting out. We had a couple of 10th graders opting out too. So this budget is updated from today. There was a couple more people added on that I did not have originally in this budget, but I do have it now. So, and I always budget three extra because they have until April 1st, I think, to hop on to Bokead. At least that's the deadline, I believe, that Central Berkshire Regional School District has. So we still may get a couple, so I have that covered if that happens. And transportation, I estimated a 2.5% increase.
TA?
TA.
What's next?
Streetlights. There's a very minor increase in this budget over last year. Basically, everything has remained the same, except that we've added streetlight repair and maintenance because we own those lamps now. If they go out, it's our responsibility to fix it. And so I put that in this budget. We did have one repair this year where I had to add it to the budget for '22. It was a light, a traffic light, actually, that wasn't working correctly. So that was down on South and Hubbard.
Is that, is that streetlight repair and maintenance, $5,000 enough? I don't know what the average maintenance cost is or price is to repair something.
I think in '20, at the end of '21, we had a few things that needed to be get fixed and that was probably like $1,900.
Okay.
And then this past streetlight wasn't like $1,900 again, right?
I think so. I think it was around there. Then that was four lights. Usually it's four or five a year, it seems, you know. But sooner or later, it'll come to a drop.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Kind of like the annual life of these streetlights and...
See how it goes.
Yeah, okay.
Because they're LEDs, they're supposed to last.
Right, exactly.
Somebody throws a rock at them.
That's right.
Right?
Is that the only town light that made in Hubbard? I'm sorry, South and Hubbard?
Yes.
That's the only town?
Yeah. But yeah, those are all, you know.
But we do have, like, the lighting lights at Nessus. We take care of those. Those kind of were fixed not long ago. And then the South Street Light Board, you know, that lights up when a truck goes by that's over a limit.
Yep. Okay. TA?
And those are all, oh, right here too, so you can notice that.
Okay. TA?
TA.
Are we all set on this one?
Then comes sewer treatment. This will be a little, this is, the budget is going up over $200,000 due to the City of Pittsfield's intergovernmental sewer assessment we get. It's been, I've listed at the bottom there what our sewer assessments have been over the last five years. And for the very first time, we received the estimate from Pittsfield. And I've attached a copy of what that is. It's page, there's the fiscal year '21 assessment first and then '22's estimate from the sewer superintendent of the enterprise fund. So because of this, or may, there's going to be a need to increase the sewer rate. Everything else is level, except for that.
And it will be a substantial increase. You'll see that FY '21 is $7.5 million and FY, and FY '22 is $9.5 million. So that's, that's quite an increase.
Is it $9.5 million or $950,000?
The total budget. The expenses are slated to go up $1.5 million and the personnel of $200,000. All in rough figures, of course, but approximately.
Who's?
Oh, for the City of Pittsfield. Yeah, that one too.
So what's attached is FY '21? Did I miss anything?
It should be underneath it.
Oh, sorry. I missed that. I'm good, thank you. Yeah? Okay. Any questions? TA?
Okay, so I think that's it.
Great. Thank you, Senator. Oh, we got the, sorry. We got the Central Berkshire Regional School District in here too, but that's just adopted.
That's just the budget.
That's just what it is.
Did you all go over that part already?
Yeah, we had a high-level presentation and they're going to come back again at some point.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know if they're going to come back. They sent us our little assessment letter already and...
Yep, they were going to kind of go through some more detail if we had questions, but, yeah. Okay.
This will probably be our last budget meeting before the last finance committee meeting.
Yep.
If you didn't want to...
Nothing to change, just kind of understand it.
Yeah, okay.
I think they're coming before the finance committee Wednesday.
Okay. I'll tune into that then. Okay, where do you want to go next, Mr. Hutchinson? The transfer station or...
Sure. Yes, we've, it was left to me to clean up some odds and ends last time. This is the final budget we've come up with. It includes all of the items we have to, we have to pay for to go do the transfer station. Of course, it does not include any revenue figures, but we got those in the machine last time. So this also includes the final salary figures. I think that was the final, the final item to be completed.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, but I got to find it first. Oh, there. Under expenses, the first line, $6,269, or six... In my opinion, I'm not the town accountant, but I think this line item should be, as it was in the past, a separate budget. Because this is a procurement of services. It has nothing to do with the operation of the transfer station. And by rights, I think the, who's the procurement officer? Is that you, Tom, or is it Pat?
Yeah, it's me. You know, it could go under building maintenance, really.
Well, no, it just should go under, by its own free standing, it always was. And whoever's the procurement officer, his proposals or bids. I don't think it should be in the operational budget of the transfer station. It has nothing to do with the transfer station.
That's trash removal and that's where it's been the whole time I've been around.
Yeah, but it was a separate budget, see?
It's always been this budget.
Well, didn't have a budget before, no. This is the first budget ever for this transfer station operation.
Well, this is the department where the transfer station operates. So through this waste services, we're in there, recycling services, we're in here. The only difference is some added costs, but also the salaries. Because we paid a contractor to run that transfer station. And so the trash removal of buildings also running there too.
Well, I mean, from a accounting point, don't you think it should be a separate budget? And that is an operational budget of now going to be up and running, operational entity?
Well, it should still be an operational budget because it's an operational expense for the town. The question is where should it be?
Well, my, again, my personal opinion, for accounting purposes and clarity, it should be separate.
I understand what you're saying too, John. Is that why you can show what we're making?
We're not making and we're not deducting this out of what?
Right.
Right. And we have been talking about treating it the same way we treat the sewer budget, which has its operation, operational 440 and 449 in the general fund.
You're speaking of the transfer station as a whole.
Right. And so I'm just saying, this is, the sewer's treated like an offset receipt, where we budget for the receipts in the general fund and we expend in the general fund for the transfer station. So we, maybe if we do that, excuse me, for the sewer, maybe we can do that same thing with the transfer station.
Well, I don't see how it's that hard, just for peremptive services.
You're just speaking about the trash hauling for the town.
Yeah, yeah. That's all. And all the buildings.
The 65...
Right. It's just always been in this budget, so it never got moved out. So if that's what is desired, then...
Yes, that's what we'd like to see. Now, this transfer station budget, operational budget that Tom Manager submitted, I assume it is going to be under the jurisdiction of our distinguished road superintendent, Buddy Hall, who gets that into your portfolio. You've got nothing to do with putting out bids for trash hauling. That's another department.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we were in contact, you know, Tom.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, we're asking it to be separate, separate places.
I think the perfect place for us is in building maintenance.
That's where I think it would normally...
Perfect!
Because buildings, buildings and grounds.
I think it's just cleaner that way too. It doesn't look like we're adding, attacking on stuff sort of the bottom line on the transfer station.
And we're trying to get this up and running here. There's a lot of, certainly skepticism out there and lagging the public knowing exactly what's happening here. We certainly don't want to confuse them. You don't want the town meeting, somebody to bring this up, like, this is both the transfer station. You know, stickers and bags, et cetera, et cetera. Why is that in there?
Great point.
Thank you. Tom, appreciate it. Building maintenance, great. Is that the other pack?
Yes.
Great.
The same budget, but just moved to a different department. I think the adjustment.
Yeah.
You don't need a motion on that, right? You don't need...
No.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Yeah.
Are they all set? Did you follow that one?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Aye.
Parks?
Well, it's been, I didn't have any other questions. I don't think so. I think Tom has done a great job here. He did, there's definitely a lot of flexibility here because there's solo flight on this. Because it's a solo flight, it's going to theoretically start July 1st, right?
Yes.
Can on October 1st, we get update on the revenue that you've projected, that we are going to be taking in? And most notably, by October 1st, you'll know how many stickers you sold.
Through October 1st?
Yeah. Well, that's going to be 99% of them.
I would hope so.
Okay. I mean, the other ones, the other revenue expected sources may not all be in by that date.
Yeah, the car stickers will be in, but the bag stickers, which I sold throughout...
And the source of revenue from, as you pointed out, the scrap metal?
Well, you know, we have yet to, to see a proposed contract from Casella. So I can't speak to any of the other operations.
But the idea of an operational update is, I think, a great idea.
And October 1st.
Sure.
And thank you.
And then we just kind of do it and see what...
See where we are?
Yeah, I think it's, what do you think, Mark?
Very good.
Yeah, okay.
I think we have to discuss how we're handling this account too. How we're putting it in special revenue fund, we're doing that offset receipt. I mean, where's the money going to get put? Doesn't go, you know, we can probably talk about that, Tom. We have kind of discussed it, but...
Well, yes, it's on the town meeting warrant to have the 53D account.
Okay. I haven't seen that yet, so...
Yeah, so, yeah, and we've, I've been updating the board on our discussions about that. That will allow us to track expenses and revenue more precisely or at least it'll be, it'll be a cleaner way of accounting for it.
Yeah. Great. Good discussion. 650 Parks is the next one I have on my list. Parks and Mountains.
It's going to be just salaries. I've known it before.
Yeah, I remember going through before. Sal, okay, so TA?
TA.
TA? I think the same was with the communications talks, the salary.
Yep.
TA?
Just a quick question, Joe. Have we resolved the salary, all the salaries?
I believe so. Thank you.
That's good.
Yeah, I believe we'll give it, if we, do we have exec session tonight, Tom?
It's on the agenda.
We're going to give a quick update on that as well to Mr. Wolf's question. And then police department, I think was the salaries?
Yep.
Mr. TA? All right. And...
I didn't hear a TA on the transfer station.
Uh, come on back. Transfer station, Department 434. TA?
Yep. Time we asked you in the, you see, this, this presentation, the budget thing, presented slightly different. Each and every meeting we had, we'd have an update on where we were with the key figure. How far are we under or over the levy limit? Do you have any idea? Zane?
I haven't, I would have to put all of the latest budgets into the budget matrix. It's, you know, I believe, you know, we're going to be, you know, we haven't, we certainly came into this year with an astounding level of...
Yeah, yeah.
Excess levy capacity, rather. So, yeah, I'll certainly be happy to get that for you for next time.
Good. This is a general idea where we are.
That's all? Sure.
I think we're going to be okay. The finance committee has a preliminary under the levy limit of a million, so... And I'm not sure, they don't have the budgets in that we just spoke about.
Yeah.
That could be a couple hundred thousand.
So once we get everything submitted, then we'll just time to bring it back and just have an analysis of where we are so we can publicly talk about it and ask any questions. Yeah.
I have everything except last week's and this week's in my plan project. So, and I'll be at the finance committee meeting Wednesday night as well, so...
So it's added to a future agenda for levy limit. Okay. We all set on budgets? All right, awesome. Thank you both. Feel free to hang around. Oh, and we get division, Dalton Division, that's, I don't have that one. Okay. So number seven, disposition of our property. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yeah, well, I put this on because I, you know, we have not had a discussion fully and I understand there may be, there may be news to consider. You know, there are items on the town meeting warrant that if they're, we have to, we have to have town meeting approval to either lease or sell the property. So I'm thinking one of the things that could come out of this discussion is a directive to have a broad warrant article. And maybe by the time we get close to the town meeting, we'll have a better idea of how things are going. Or you could make decisions anytime up to then. But town meeting will have to decide one way or another if we're going to dispose of the land in any way. And, you know, I had gotten permission to lease part of it and perhaps there might be a sale as well, so, which would have to be at auction. And we discussed last time setting the minimum price at $1,000 an acre. And so I think the warrant article at this point should, this is really more of a warrant discussion unless someone else has more to add at this point.
I think, I may be missing something here. I thought we were under the impression we were going to speak to the town attorney to see where we're at. So if we can sell it, we'll sell it.
Sorry, if I, I don't mean any... I don't know why it involved this, but I am, but I'm led to believe by the Department of Agriculture, in fact, I talked to them this afternoon on the phone, that there is between the, and the problem is the peace in Windsor. And they think that a proposal has been proposed that will allow Dalton to freely sell the APR property in the town of Dalton or lease it by either auction or request for proposals. And there's some good news imminent as soon as a certain piece of, of the procedure falls into place, which is expected any day regarding the peace in Windsor. So I think, can't say much more, but I can't speak for them, but as soon as I know, and I've been keeping the town manager up to date on this, as soon as we know, and it should be very shortly, about this is going to transact, so to speak, we can move ahead with a decision.
I don't think the decision in Windsor should drive our decision.
No.
But I want to know, what I don't have clarity on right now is the legal position of what we're able to do. That's, that's what we need right now. Can we sell it? Can we lease it? If we can sell it, then we go back to our original position a year and a half ago, to your point last week.
Don't, if you just, just have pages for, say, another week?
We can't do that. We can't, we can't tie the two together because you have to go to auction and it can't be tied to, if...
No, but what I think what's going to be proposed would, would be a lot... No, but what I think what's going to be proposed would, would be allowing Dalton to sell its portion without the opposition of the Department of Agriculture.
Well, I guess that's what we've been asked. We asked our town manager to see, what's, what's our legal position?
And that's the first that I've heard of that. Position from Mass Department of Agriculture. The parcel in Windsor is privately owned, and the taxes have been paid, so there's no. With selling that portion of the land. The problem has always been that there's a single APR for both parcels. And the town has not been able to sell the town's parcel because it is part of a greater parcel. Now, apparently, there's some movement that I don't know about, that EMDAR would allow a sale to happen. Now, EMDAR may or may not be aware that, I presume EMDAR is aware that the town has to sell it by auction. So it might not go to, I, it. It might not go to someone who bought the Windsor parcel. And that, that might or might not be fine with EMDAR. I don't know, this is the first I've heard of any movement on their part regarding that aspect.
I think it's likewise, you can't buy the Windsor property unless EMDAR approves it without buying our piece of property. You can't sell that one, or however many acres of Windsor, because it has to all go as one thing. That's where the problem is.
Bart, you're exactly right. And I think that's what they're working on, a solution to keep the, the APR lien on the whole parcel intact. And I guess, according to that, they're making progress. There's nothing to do, we don't have any decision to make on this. It's going to be under recommendation. And I think they're going to recommend that we either sell it or request for proposals, whichever.
So if, if EMDAR could get an agreement from the owner of the Windsor parcel, that they would sell it to whoever won the Dalton auction, that, that could be one way that they might be able to move forward.
Yeah, I don't think too much about this. I think it's even better than that, Tom. I think a person who's interested in buying the Dalton parcel is getting a PNS purchase sales agreement to buy the six, four acres of Windsor.
Well, we still have to put it up for auction.
No, then, then it would be up tops, yes.
At the end of the day, I have two concerns. One, best deal for Dalton, both in value, short term or long term. And number two, and I'm not familiar with this property line or the design of it, that we have a right-of-way access for North Mountain Park. I'm not sure if that goes through either one of these parcels. You probably know that better than I do.
I said, I can't even remember.
But making sure that that roadway or that pathway is.
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem with, with there being an easement. Exactly where it is may have to be surveyed.
Right, okay.
Don't we get to the point where we're going to make a decision to go forward with an auction or a request for proposal? We can take, I can't say anything. A minimum bid or, you know, whatever. So I, I think it's on his way, but.
Yeah, so, so the way the article is written now, it would authorize the lease or sale of all, or a portion of the former garden property. So we can either sell all of it or lease part of it.
And then, and if we know what we want to do by the time Tom meeting, then we can make a motion to amend that article and say we want approval to sell or approval to lease, if we know that.
And if we, if we, if we don't know, then we get approval to do either.
Right, right, okay.
So I've written it as broadly as possible.
I just can't wait for this thing to be done.
Going on forever. Jay, do you have any idea how, we've got five, six, seven years?
I think so. That's the last time we had an auction, and that's when that property went up.
It'd be great to get out of the under this.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
Yeah, I, I would like to have Tom find out, you know, we talked about rent this land, the tillable part. There's not a heck of a lot of tillable land there. And plus, if somebody's going to rent it, they're going to have to put a lot of money in it to develop it, so it can be tillable because it's been sitting there for five or six years. I'd like to know how much money we can actually realize from renting the land versus selling it. We're looking at, if we'd sell it for $1,000 an acre, we're looking at for a big windfall compared to just renting it and being responsible for it. But I am just curious to see how much we can actually rent it for. And the other thing is, I totally agree with Mr. Dibber's, I'm not even thinking about giving up North Mountain Park on this, so whichever way we do.
It's kind of short-term, long-term financial win on which one would be best for town, whether selling or leasing.
And I just say that the other part of it is, is that with the lease, we also have the use of the land as recreational property and managed forest.
Yeah, which goes to the open space program, so, yeah.
So there's, there's a, there is a non-financial interest in it as well.
I guess let's, if we can agree to agree and revisit the best options and bring those back, let's figure that out and then go next, next step.
Yeah, so, at any rate, I did want to just say that the way the warrant article is written now is completely flexible.
Mr. Wolf, you all set?
Oh, I think I would advise to put it on the agenda for.
We have a meeting next week? Yes.
Okay. Put it on the agenda, just in case there's a, a big release of news or advice from the Department of Agriculture.
Fair point.
And there is a meeting next week, right here?
The regular meeting. This is just a special budget meeting. I would just throw this on to keep it, keep it discussion.
Number eight, update on Dalton Division Road. I have a TAC update on this one, and, and I want to thank Bud for jumping in and looking at some options, too. So basically where we ended up at the TAC meeting is that Berkshire Regional Planning Commission team presented four scenarios. And, you know, one of those scenarios was that we get bumped down the list to 27, 28. And it really is because we're not ready. I mean, if you, if you really look at the, the list of projects, there are some other projects that are ahead on 25% design. And if you look at the use of the funding and how they need to apply funding through all the projects, it was, it was challenging to ask for Mayakulpa to keep us where we are, although made the request. But at the, at the end of the, at the end of the discussion, I think it's called Scenario Two, it basically puts, it puts the Mount Washington Road ahead of us and it bumps us down to 27, 28. I was not going to get, it was clear I was not going to get the support from all the TAC members to win a vote, to move us up. It was, and we, it was clear that, you know, God bless Pittsfield, and they got a lot going on, but they have, I think, three other projects on that TAC list, which I didn't think they were going to risk by moving us up either, right? So take the good with the bad. My opinion, the good is, we're still on the list, because they could have dropped us completely. And so the good is that we're on the list. The bad is that now we're looking at 27, 28. The other good is that gives us more time to do the engineering and the right-of-way. The bad is that we have to then look at the maintenance of the road, and that's where, again, thank you, Bud, for taking that ball and looking into things. So if you want to give us a quick update on that, but anybody have a, so it's going to go to the NPO, John, on the 22nd, I think the meeting is?
Yeah, but I think, oh.
With that recommendation of going with that scenario two, and I did vote in support of that, kind of reading tea leaves and everything else, so that's just going to, yeah.
But I think the final decision is May, tell me, is it May 24th or something like that? It's always around 24th, 22nd, 23rd. That's when the significant most going to think like that. I realize it's going to be on the agenda for tomorrow, I didn't see it.
I think they have a TAC, I think they have an update. I don't know if they.
Yeah, they probably have an update, but every day. Well, I'll be, definitely I'll be there.
So it's kind of good news, bad news, good news, good, bad news, I guess? It's the innovative, so come on up and tell us a little bit about what you found. Bob, do you have any questions on that TAC update?
No, not at all. I can follow that. Thanks, Joe.
Okay. Mark, you good?
After I got the news, I did a little research on that road, because that's obviously a real toll, you know, no doubt about it, it's awful. So I kind of got a quote, I called the contractor, I actually called their state data engineer, and he's like, "I'll be down in a half hour. I'll come visit, we'll go for a ride, go check things out, see what we should do with it." He goes, "It's been a little while since I've been out here," he goes, "It's jumpy." He goes, "You're not going to, it's not going to survive for six years to, you know, the next one, so, you know, it needs to be milled a bit, is what it needs to be." And so I called the contractor, who's a workforce in town, and he was like, "Yeah," he goes, "How long?" You know, and I already had his numbers, kind of. We measured the width, the length, how many stretches are in the road. I was like, "Well, what do you got?" So, you know, I went on the phone with him for 10 minutes. He came up with a number, and it's about, it's about $330,000, like a milling bit that, you know, we got to play it out the bid, obviously. But even with the prices that Blacktop's going to be, you know, he knows that, given me the quote, you know, estimate he gave me, he's, I thought it was actually cheaper than I thought. I thought it was going to be more, to be honest with you. But that's kind of where it's at. You know, we do have the money in Chapter 90 for me to do that project, you know, if we want to do this project. I know there's some other roads we put through the fur cog I put out, which I'll find out in May, you know, how that's going to work out, too. If we have to bump one of those other little streets off to do that, because obviously that's a major road coming in out of town, we'll do that. We'll get to that, you know, see what we want to do here, and then, you know, go through and figure out, get a proposal together.
Again, the road's half in Pittsfield.
You go right where I was going to go, Tom.
Think alike, hey, that should be a deal and a half for them. For $150,000, which is chicken feed to them, you got $42 million in ARPA funds. $150,000?
Tom, do you still have that, that meeting request with the mayor on pen and a calendar invite or anything else of that nature? Did you already have that chat or?
Yes, it was more in the, in the, with the content that you related earlier.
The spirit of trying to support us in moving our project forward, right? So it's, it's a different. But, but, yeah, to your point, John, I would like to take this number, and you must know the highway guys over there and things, but maybe.
Ricardo, what's his name? He's on the, he's on the NPO, you remember this? Or else.
I don't, I've never met him, but I know, I know.
Maybe start at Bud's level, and Bud kind of, he didn't say, you want to go in halves?
Yeah, we talked to him.
Let's see if maybe we can get ARPA, and I'll be happy to join a call, too, because it does benefit their, you know, their residents as well as ours. And there's, there's some funding available for ARPA to apply to, and even if it's a 50-50 split, I'd be.
I don't know, one question I think I'd have is, I believe Pittsfield paid cover that not crazy long ago, and that's Dalton.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that was, I don't think we helped them at all.
We could start a new trend, right? But then the question becomes, just in general, I guess I'll defer to, you know, rest of the board, is that 398 or is it 39?
330.
330, okay, so I was completely wrong. Okay, 330. Yeah, 330, with the money available in the pool, do we reprioritize things, but maybe come back with a thought or plan of that based upon the reaction?
But you were, Tom manager had Orchard Road programmed in there. And Orchard Road in desperate, desperate need, but also it needs more, a milling job, it needs a lot of engineering and drainage work. Especially that pond, remember the pond, Mark? That you pointed out was pond there behind the, housed on the westly side, northwestly corner of. Peas and, you know where it is. So there's a lot of issues to be addressed, and we could postpone that, just a thought.
Those are, we, Tom, we applied for grant with Grant and Redder to work on it, to get that drainage work. And Tom actually approved money a few years ago to do the drainage work, and it kind of got left by the wayside a bit. But they're coming back to get on that, hopefully, end of March, April, so, soon, I was actually going to send them.
It's a few hours in the fire, see what kind of happens.
To get that movement, I'd like to get that drainage done, because, I mean, I had all intentions of taking care of that one this year, because that's probably the worst in town.
We talked about Chapter 90 money, but, I mean, other sources of money, and we had talked about how we always rely on Chapter 90 money. We don't put in the money for the, through our budgets to pave the roads. That combined with ARPA money, if we can use, I mean, if we talk about Pittsfield using ARPA money, maybe using a little bit of that, combining it and getting the best we can, the best bang for our buck. Get as many streets done, and, I mean, obviously Dalton Division Road's a priority, Orchard Street, Orchard Road, we got to get that done, obviously, in the timetable, it's getting the engineering done. But these other, these side roads is what we got to do, too, so.
But if you think, I mean, sounds inconceivable that the engineering, we would have the money for the engineering, and the engineering would be done by the summer.
That was the hope, because they did some of it before. They already did all, like, the, from what I gather, they did all the measurements, they did all most of the fieldwork, I think, done. They have a few wetland things they got to figure out, I guess, to check the way that's.
So Mark, I suggested that if we can take our. Some of our urgent road needs, Orchard, Dalton Division, not sure what else is on the list, we're high urgent. What's that going to cost us? What's the alternative funded sources we have available or tracks to grants or ARPA? What's the balance, and then fund that balance in a special capital project? We can do that. We can, we have our Chapter 90 money, our ARPA money, anything like that, we can do. I mean, I think we're looking at, you know, we've talked about these other budgets where we've let things slide for a long time, that we have to kick the can down the road. And we have to, we're going to have to fix some of these. And there's no bigger complaint out there, and it's not against the Highway Department, it's everybody, it's the roads, right? You can't look at any social media that people aren't complaining about roads, not just in Dalton and Pittsfield, everywhere you go. And I think that's, I think that's a wise area to spend our money. Is that plan that you and Tom kind of work on, kind of look at that, and say, okay, here's what, we're kind of looking at, just kind of one big picture? Because I think that would be interesting to see, and now it would be at the same time. And then, who knows what happens with the fair share amendment. If that gets passed, then there's a windfall, cash going into the state for roads and schools.
And we're looking at a possible infusion into Chapter 90 and PAH hole money as well.
Right. Okay, so we get some options to explore. But I, I, just for the board, the quick response by Bud was amazing. You know, I put the message out, saying, okay, here's a TAC plan, we're kind of in this pinch, and then the next day, you kind of had some numbers and ideas, so thank you for that. That's very, very helpful. But speaking, a little off topic here, but do you have enough money for, for your PAH holes for the rest of this year? I know you bumped up your budget for next year for PAH holes. Are you good for this year, or do you need?
We got enough. I got all reserve on transfer a couple weeks ago. Which gets me until kind of May. Kind of, I have enough, hopefully the Blacktop plants will open in the next couple weeks, because cold patch, you know, you know, hit or miss if it works. But, you know, we'll be able to get hot next, and start doing some follow-up. We should be okay. So if I get to, if I get to May 1st, that's, that's my goal, and I'll be able to, do a little money move around, I'll be able to do a little better.
Mr. Bishop, do you have any questions on your side? They're in Zoom land.
Oh, I didn't know if Tom mentioned a PAH hole fund that's covered from the state. Are we eligible for any money for that, for this?
Well, I haven't heard any movement on it from the legislature. I think they're looking at the, at the total package that the governor's offering. And as usual, particulars get caught up in the larger scene. But the governor did promote it, and I will try to find out what I can about where it is.
Thank you, Tom.
Just for, to save Bud some time, if he doesn't want to hang around for the rest, if I could motion, I just have a quick, it's, it's, I like to put on a remarksless like board, it's just another TAC update, but I don't have to, I think it's important to share, and then, any objection if we could do that? Any objection? If I go, if we just go to remarksless like board, you agree? If I go, if we just go to this remarks to the select board, uh, real quick?
I, I, one question about.
Oh, yeah, Tom, yeah, go ahead.
But you mentioned, you, the coal patches doesn't work that well. Didn't we buy some kind of a machine that?
That coal patch, you can't heat up the coal patch. Coal patch is cold, it's just the way it goes in.
So what do we do, what do we buy that machine for, that big hot patch?
Cause we, we can buy mix, when the hot plants are open, we can get it, keep it hot enough to do good batches. And we had material, during the winter, I did have material I could heat up and that all winter long and just, I had, it's, it's expensive. And the budget's kind of where it is, so I'm using the coal patch at the moment. Except pretty much, I've only been using coal patch for the last couple of weeks. Before that, I had better stuff that's been holding up pretty good, with just some of the water. Dalton Village had a couple spots.
So isn't it, okay, you gotta get to something else. Isn't it traditional for your blacktop plant, where is the blacktop plant now?
Behind Maxi, underneath Street.
And you can buy it from Maxi?
It's, it's someone else that rents their, their equipment back, I mean, at Troy's End.
Traditionally, they open on April 1st?
They, they said they're gonna be open on April 1st this year. Usually it's the 15th, though.
10?
Couple of weeks early, they said, so.
Uh, our movement remarks to the select board, just real quick, and we can put this on the future agenda too, so I can get a little bit more detail. But I just want to share with this group, um, is that, again, during the tack meeting, uh, the Mass DOT rep, uh, I'm gonna pronounce his last name correctly, Peter Fer- Ferrey.
Brewer.
Ferrey. I asked him about the, uh, the roundabout update on South Main, and that's now off their list. So they're gonna do lights, uh, reconfiguration, they're doing a big contract across Berkshire County, and that will be a light configuration out of roundabout on South Main. So, that's it, that was it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Bud, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for that adjustment, Tom. Uh, and then moving to, um, back to number nine, town meeting draft warrants.
Uh, yes, I, the main reason I gave, uh, you another draft now was just to, um, propose mostly that all of the, uh, capital items be put under one article. Uh, I split them out earlier because I'd heard there was some, um, discontent about lumping things together. Uh, so there's the two possibilities, and however you wanna deal with it, I'm, I'm happy to do. We can have it under one article, um, and I can put it in table form as well, if you like. Uh, or we can have them in, in separate articles, one per department, as I, as I proposed last week. So I, I don't really, right now it's Article, uh, 21, uh, in this, in this, um, I also mistakenly, the, the numbering is off. And I mistakenly included the, uh, the forest ward and capital items twice. I had, I, I did delete the, uh, the separate article for that. So you can just consider that deleted and everything renumbered after it. One more item on the forest ward, the total given is incorrect, it's not 30,584, it's 25,834. But that's all corrected on my, uh, um, on the drafts I have now. So the question mainly is, should we put capital items in one article or should we split them out?
Tom, first question, you hit it around it last time, is the first I had heard about. Are we trying to, through your actions, eliminate a need for a end of June special town meeting?
Well, this could take care of all of the regular business I know of. Uh, and it would make the possibility of a June town meeting really into anything that we absolutely had to take care of, either as, as a result of the votes taken here, or if there were special items that came up afterwards. If I didn't, I, I didn't see, um, last year when I came in, I saw that there was, there were some things that were sort of usual in the operating expenses in, in the first meeting. And then a whole lot of things that were really pretty important, all the capital expenses and other unusual expenses in a special town meeting. And in, in the past, I found that, um, the, the annual town meeting is what residents have focused on in the, in the towns that I've been before. That the fewer times we ask people to come out, I think, the better, because you get more people voting on more items of importance. So yes, I, I'm also proposing that we take care of as much as possible in, in one meeting. That said, I'm fine with, with, you know, if, if you, if you thought it was gonna be great discussion, say, on the planning board items. Uh, those are of a different nature, they're, they're bylaws, so I can see a rationale for, for separating them out. But again, the more people who vote on important items, I, I think the better. And if we can get it done in one, uh, I think that would be great. We can also reserve it in case it goes too long and we say, well, we're gonna continue this in a month.
Oh, I agree with you completely. How, years ago, I may forget the rationale, maybe Sandy remembers, we got off the track. Everything was at the annual town meeting. That very phrase, annual town meeting, means the town's business for the forthcoming year. And it's suggested, but that mandated, that all important, big ticket items, whether they be planning, uh, planning board issues or zoning issues, or financial issues, be conducted at an annual town meeting. And the special town meetings is supposedly reserved for emergency type situations, that you get crap up. But it's gotten distorted over the years for some reason. And I'm, I'm very grateful that you're going back to the old system where all these big ticket items and the capital, uh, venue will be considered at the annual town meeting?
Well, I'm, I'm proposing it, it, it's a lot of business.
Yeah.
Um, and, and it's your warrant.
I'd perfectly be good with that. I don't know about the rest of the board, if you're.
Yeah, I, I, I'm perfectly fine with that as well. And I, I think that the, um, the informational session we had the week before gets everybody prepared, ready and prepared to make their decisions and votes and move, moving this along.
It's a good one, Joe, cause it will be just a week down the road.
Yeah.
Instead, if we have this thing at the end of June, it'll be five to six weeks away.
Right.
It'll be a pleasant little summer.
Everybody's planning the summer, summer breaks and, yeah, so. Mark, what do you think?
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Bishop, any thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I'm very good with that, especially like, I think Johnny said, uh, the big ticket items, the more we get done with this, number one, there's more people at the annual town meeting than special town meetings. So, and I think the voters will get a better voice at the annual town meeting doing it this way.
And then, um, Ms. Hutchinson, do your, what are your questions was the list of capital projects, how we prefer the list of on the warrant?
Yes.
I'll, I, I have an opinion, but I'll defer to the group first. Any thoughts?
I just want to go over to real tests, I say, I'm kind of up in the air either way.
So what I prefer, what I prefer to see, what I, just as a voter perspective, right, and a resident, I like to, like to see it separated by department, so I understand what my tax investment is going to specifically for that. Versus if there's something on the list, and I object to one thing on the list, I might vote against the entire package. Cause I don't know, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Right?
If you didn't like it, you'd have to admit it.
Right.
Now, that's a good suggestion, just list it by departments.
Okay. Which is how I presented it last week, so I still have that version, I can keep and vote, and so that's, I'm fine using that.
Right. Mr. Bishop, thoughts?
Yes, I like that idea, Joe.
Okay.
Totally agreement.
And was that it for the warrants, Ms. Hutchinson?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the next one is the, uh, the great town man's updates we always receive. Oh, by the way, we have a goal for Mr. Hutchinson for the town meeting, is that we're gonna go above 45 minutes in the land. Cause I could lose after this 45 minutes. The first time meeting was like 45 minutes, I was like, this is first day in the job?
I don't know.
And then, yeah, so.
You can't do it for 45 minutes. I have been working mostly on last minute budget items, uh, and adjustments. I believe everything is now in order for both salaries and expenses. Representative Mark is planning to bring Representative Pignan Tally to Town Hall sometime in the near future for office hours to introduce him to residents as the new state rep for Dalton, due to the district orders being changed. That's assuming he wins reelection in the fall. Uh, we will be sure to let as many residents know as possible. I've been attending finance committee meetings as they go through the budgets, for which the set, uh, as they go through the budgets for which the select board has given its tentative approval. They hope to finish their work by March 23rd, that's this kind of Wednesday, but have a number of items still to consider. And have been, uh, trying to limit their meetings to two hours, so we'll see what happens Wednesday. The Community Recreation Association has requested permission to hold their annual Dalton Road Race on Sunday, May 1st. There will be both a 10K and a 5K race walk beginning at 9:00 AM at Nessicus Middle School. I don't know if that's something where the select board usually gives its formal approval.
Yeah.
I'll put that on the agenda. Actually, Alyssa will put it on the agenda, I, I just take credit for it. Based on examples from other towns, I've created a film permit application covering all the potential inconveniences and requires a plan to deal with them. Acquiring a plan to deal with them. I'm suggesting a $25 filing fee, which is also common. Uh, this goes along with, with learning that, um, the Mass Film Office has, um, a, a bank of photographs that they can show people who might be interested in filming in the area. So, uh, they, they, they would, I'm sure, love a photo of Wakona Falls, uh, all of the cultural and natural amenities of Dalton. Uh, three, Dalton stores have been found to sell, to have sold cigarettes to minors. The Board of Health will be taking this up at a future meeting as the stores are facing Board of Health fines. The Highway Superintendent and I had a good meeting with the Department of Environmental Protection's Municipal Assistance Coordinator, who is especially tasked to help towns with their landfills and transfer stations. She is a wealth of knowledge and we look forward to her guidance as we move forward. I'll be opening the bids for assessing services for next year with Principal Assessor Gene Boudreaux and, um, about to be appointed Assessor Laura Mafuccio. Uh, I'm pleased to say that Laura Mafuccio, oh, and, uh, we all know that we, um, just reappointed her, so I don't have to mention that. Alyssa Maschino and I attended a webinar of federal requirements for reporting on ARPA expenses, known as the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund or Program. Alyssa will be doing the hands-on work. I'm pleased to say that the final rule has made both the program and reporting requirements simpler and easier. Uh, but we will continue to bring you items to approve individually, uh, because that will be part of the reporting requirement. And that's all I have for now.
Yeah, I got one question, I got one question. We're making all these moves with Town Hall employees over to the bank. They cost money. And they were, some are going to the CRAA, and there's a whole, for, of other expenses. Do we have a budget for this? And if not, where is the money coming from?
Um, the town meeting did authorize $500,000 for Town Hall renovation, so that's where the money's coming from, okay? Costs have risen as we've discovered more problems such as the bats and the asbestos. Uh, we were advised some time ago, and, and I reported that, uh, uh, it's looking more like an asbestos removal project rather than Town Hall renovation. And we may even have to do work on the second floor at some point. Uh, so we're going to stretch the budget as far as we can. We, uh, we hope to have plans in our hands next week, preliminary plans, and get them bid as soon as possible for the actual construction, which, some of which we, we hope will precede the asbestos removal, to build a subfloor in the attic, so that when they do remove the asbestos, if any of it falls, it won't fall right through the second floor. Which will be sealed off, uh, but still it would be much easier if it were more easily contained. So, uh, there are a number of moving parts. They do seem to be coming together a little later than we had expected, but we, um, hope to be going out to bid, um, you know? I, I, I can't give a date for it, because we're just getting the preliminary drawings next week. And some of it will depend on, on how, uh, our vision lines up with the, the designer. It's the same designer we had before, so it's, it's, it should be a minimal change. This is really an extension of the previous contract. Uh, so we're hoping that that, um, works out well and that as soon as the bats are done, we can create that floor and asbestos people can move right in. And we'll see how far we can go. It's, it's the kind of work where there can be unanticipated events. So, so I, I hesitate to say exactly how much we're going to get done. We hope to get done everything that was included in phase one and phase two of the previous plan. Um, but we have been warned that we should now think of this as an asbestos removal project.
In a bad way.
Well, yeah, that has to come first. Uh, and they, they've actually started work.
Great. At some point in time, say, between now and July 1st, could you give us a financial update of how much all this is costing us? Like the rents for the bank and stuff, I think you did at one point in time, but.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, we, we utilized some moving companies, didn't we? Moving companies?
We did.
Okay. And renting the CRAA and any other costs, just so we have an idea what this is costing us at.
There are a number of upfront costs.
Yeah.
On the preparation. It's like painting, you spend 90% of your time scraping and preparing the wood and fixing things and then 10% of your time painting.
All right, thanks. Thank you again for that update. Future agenda items, anyone? Mr. Bishop, any future agenda items?
All good.
Okay. Any items not anticipated four eight hours before the meeting? There are none? Any additional remarks to the select board? There are none. Uh, tax announcements, the tax collectors and assessor's office have moved from Town Hall across the street to the old Berkshire Bank building at 488 Main Street. You can continue to use the drop boxes located outside of Town, Town Hall for any payments, or you can stop over to their new location. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which is in effect from November 15th, 2021 through April 15th, 2022. There's no parking on streets between 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM. The following committees have vacancies and are looking for volunteers, the ADA Committee, the Beautification Commission, Dalton Cable Advisory Committee, the Dalton Green Committee, Finance Committee, Stormwater Management Commission, and the Waste Management and Recycle Committee. If interested, please reach out to the Tom Andrews office by calling 413-684-6111, extension 202. Uh, the next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, March 28th, 2022 at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center, with an option for Zoom participation. Um, and is there a motion to? Well, um, like, do you have an update on that salary?
Could, sure.
Okay.
It could wait, yeah. There's, there's no, um, there's no urgency.
Okay, all right, so no executive session? Okay, and we'll go to motion to adjourn?
Take a motion.
Uh, did you have a question, the exact session?
No.
No, okay. Second. All right, motion is second, uh, call in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bishop?
Uh. You're gonna do a roll call, don't, don't accept, get your session, Joe.
Well, we're not, we're not going to exact, we're just adjourning.
Oh, okay, we're good?
Yeah. All right, good night, Dalton, thank you.